Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Development updates.
Okay. So, the champion plat, we'll review this on November twenty-seventh. It's a plat along Fourth Avenue landfill area. I put the plat and printed it off in front of each of you. We, we need guidance on the encroachments of the mobile home park on Lot Three there. You can see there are a significant amount of sheds within that area as well as a tri- a mobile home as well within that area. John, walk through it. And there's gardens, there's just a substantial amount that we determined to create a special, a different lot to hopefully in the future either sell or give that land to the mobile home park just because over a long period of time, whether it was AIM owned or the mill property that owned it, people didn't, there was no one actually on occupying that land. So, the mobile home park placed sheds and trailers over time on that land. So, just looking on guidance on how we want to convey that property to the mobile home park. Also highlighting that it also borders our land that abuts our public works. So, there's no issues between that as we have future plans if needed to expand our public works in that area. So, just guidance needed on that. We'll get into that later. Also on the plat, since we're going through the plating process and bringing the plat for approval this month, we can now actively pursue buyers. There is an interest from one buyer for the fourteen acres on the west side of Fourth Avenue. It's actually two lots there. They want to continue with additional storage units and other business type uses in that area. It's appro- approximately fourteen acres. Just looking for guidance on how to proceed with the sale of this acreage, specifically the fourteen acres. And later on, looking at the sale of the remaining acres outside of the outlots for the landfill and the lots for the future public works and the other Lot Three against the mobile home park. Anna, if you just wanna discuss how it works into our CIP.
So, in our capital improvement plan, Rob and I, and this was just totally a shot in the dark. It hopefully couldn't end up being more than this, but we allocated eight hundred and seventy-five thousand over two years. At twenty, is twenty twenty-four the first year and then twenty twenty-five? Of proceeds from the sale of AIM property. So, that does include the mill property, like it's not just this hundred and sixty-seven acres long Fourth Avenue. But just keep that in mind that we are expecting or calling for a fairly significant amount of proceeds to go into our capital improvement plan to replenish the street fund. It is what we use to pay for the purchase. So, we specifically in considering the, the two parcels on the west side, the fourteen acres, which are separated by Fourth Avenue from the remainder of the property. Depending on what market is and just knowing what the cost for the maintenance of that landfill. You, Carrie, your understanding in talking with them is that, you know, somewhere between one and a half to two bucks a square foot. Like that could in itself tremendously assist us in our street fund. So, just looking for some guidance, those two parcels feel a lot different than the rest of the property in the east side of, or north side of.
East.
East side of Fourth Avenue. Cause that property is surround, touching or surrounded by the landfill and then it's also our public works property. So, we're just trying to gauge whether that's an opportunity for us to recoup some of those costs. Is that accurate? You've spoken with them more than I have.
Yep, that's it. That's accurate. The prospective buyer did just highlight that with the RFP that was just completed. If there's a way to go without the RFP, they would like to do that just with the loophole, not the loopholes, but the steps within that and they're willing to pay market value for this property. But they just wanted to, if they could, and that was the way council gave direction to not go the RFP route and rather the open market value of the property.
I, I think that the success that we've had, the lack of success we've had with the RFP process. I think that listing in a, you know, broker or however we decide is probably the strongest play here. Put it for sale, put it up, get a value on it and, and see what happens. I just don't, I, I understand that we, the RFP kinda lets you control a little bit about, but I don't think we have that much concern about where this property goes as long as we get a value for it that can help us obtain our budget that we set out for.
And one thing that. One thing to just highlight is that when we plat this property, since it's city-owned property, we're not paying ourselves those development fees of this final platted. These are two final platted pieces, so we wouldn't have development fees. So, that's just one, that's one thing we need to remember to include when we go out for open market that they are platted. There's no development fees for these properties.
Full utilities. Full utilities on the special assessments have been paid as a part of the AIM purchase.
So, you're saying that should increase the value?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just more bargaining chips on our side for the city.
But Tim, I would wholeheartedly agree with your statement. Like I think we have to get out of the attempt to be real estate agents and lean on the people that know how to do that. And I know, you know, you could do an RFQ or an RFI on.
For brokers.
For brokers.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, it's hard. Everybody in town knows a broker, realtor, or somebody that your friends or you've done work with or they sold your house. How do you as a city not look favoritively, you know, favoritively towards one or another, you know, another? So, do they, I don't know, do brokers get RFPs for something like this or RFQs?
They can do an RFQ, like tell us their qualifications of, and then we can select from there. Cause you'd wanna make sure that they have some industrial and commercial experience. This wouldn't be a residential broker that would be.
And there's some fee negotiation probably too.
Yep.
There'd also be a ve- the valuation that they would also be able to provide us, which we would be able to look at. When we sell property at the credit union, we always have to get three, no matter whether it's residential or not. And partly how they say and what they value the property at and how thorough they are through that is also part of the process.
And I would simply advocate that we, for the whole east side, maybe. So, one of the trains of thoughts could be, hey, let's slice it up in each, you know, use someone for each parcel. And I, I think there's value in having one, whoever that is, we would choose to represent the whole parcel so that they, they would be really driven to maybe work with a developer to develop across the parcel lines versus only looking at their parcel. But that's probably detail we'd get into.
And then probably reduce the fees also.
Right.
I, I have some concern about the mill site being, you know, I think the, the force or the west side, you know, we could do that. I think the mill site, we need a commercial broker that's, I wanna say national because I wanna draw development out of, you know, not just our local area. I don't think, it's too big of a project to really, for us to take down locally. May- maybe I'm misguided, but I think that going out to a, a bigger broker, a national broker that could potentially draw in a bigger developer for that mill site in a larger market, in expertise. Cause I think there's some complications on that site that might not be so, I mean, yeah, we have a landfill on Fourth, but I think.
But it's on a separate parcel.
That'd just be my concern a little bit.
Yeah, and just to clarify, like we would, this is just for the Fourth Avenue property. Like we're not at the place to where we're ready for the mill site.
And the, and the, the landfill is a separate parcel that we wouldn't necessarily look to market right now.
Correct. Yep, it'd be everything except that parcel.
So, what you're seeking tonight is our guidance of, should we sell, if we should sell, how should we go about it?
Yep.
But if there is an offer on the landfill, we'll take it. Yeah, AIM wants to buy it, it hurt.
Just before he leaves, like wholesale, here we go. Council, I'm hearing a consensus of let's engage a commercial broker.
Can I just say one more thing? I just, just throw it out there as you guys talk through that, it just popped into my mind of is there any development of that property that we think would impact the mill site negatively that we would want to avoid? Just something for us to think about. I, I don't have an answer to that, but just as we talk through it, because it's in such close proximity. You know, maybe there's something in there that we don't want to go that would detract maybe a big buyer to come into the, to the larger process or property.
Yeah, I think that's a respective question. I'm hopeful we're at a point in time now where what would go here use-wise would be different than what would go to the mill site.
Absolutely.
From a zoning perspective. I would tell you that probably twelve months ago, it was very different of, there were some conversations of some big plants going at the mill site. And I, at the time, I think we were pretty excited about it. But absolutely, I agree and I, I also don't know if there's, if it's, would even be complimentary. Maybe it would, maybe if we think about a, a warehouse location for a distillery or a brewery. I don't know the Insha Claus of Minnesota of how close the proximity, but that might have a. And I, I think, I don't know, maybe going on tangent, but I also think that's, those are the questions we should be asking our, whoever we select to represent us on this.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Maybe there's a parcel that they say, hey, that could, that one's gonna go really easy, so maybe you wanna hold on to that as candy for someone on the mill site to encourage development there, but.
I think the environment for interest rates right now for a large takedown, not the, not the most friendliest for, you know. So, we're, we're listing this at a, you know, a bit of a interesting time for real estate. And it's still selling. I, I think most of the stuff are going, but we do have to, I don't wanna exclude somebody because of the economy or something like that.
Well, we might get people that buy it just to hold it. They don't develop it right away, but they just hold it for a while until interest rates are a little more favorable. But I think a broker would help us navigate uses and zoning code. And then on the mill site, we've got Anita helping us with the design standards and zoning standards and things of that nature that'll steer that site being developed differently than, than this area. So, I think we can pull together some templates of what other cities have done for like an RFQ type broker situation to try to select somebody and get it all listed. First things first is bringing it for approval to council, like the actual plat next council meeting.
Yeah, and again, trying to stick to the ask, right? The ask right now is, hey, how do we proceed with this?
Yep.
My mind keeps going to, I wanna have a lot of conversation as council with a selected broker. My mind, some of the things like Suck Rapids is acquiring property to encourage development. I think wait, or Saint Joe has taken some similar track. And so, conversation we should have in the future here is, do we keep some of this from an attraction perspective? When we get something from GSDC or a national, to be able to say, we have this land ready to go now versus putting them in contact with a future buyer. So, but right now you're asking, hey, do you wanna sell it? And how do you wanna go about it if that's what I'm hearing?
Yep, yes. And just keeping in mind that once we reach above the one point seven five million, you can keep whatever you want.
Hey, and that's where I'd like for Rob to help us understand what's possible implications each year that we were, were to hold.
Hold it, yep.
And at an individual parcel level now that it's parcel out so that we can make a, a financial decision on that.
And keep in mind that, that is the amount that we assumed for all of the property, including the mill site, which has some prime property on it as well, once we can get it set up appropriately. So, I know that number looks really big right now, but we have a hun- you know, hundred, hundred acres on Fourth Avenue if you take the landfill out. And then probably another twenty to forty more on the mill site, so.
It'll be interesting to see if that river site down there, the Colo Bankers, or I think it's Century Twenty-One. It's got that ten acre farm.
Yep.
That's over a million for that site, right?
One point six, yeah.
And it just came back on the market or something, I saw.
It got relisted as residential.
Okay.
Um, what about the encroachment?
I do wanna add a piece on that as well. On Tenth Street, there's are some encroachments as well. They're less significant. I'd say there's a garden, a shed that's a little bit off of the property line. We sent letters to the property owners along there and we're working with them, but I just wanted to be transparent that there are other encroachments along this property just because it was vacant for so long and no one maintained their property lines. But we are working with those property owners and next spring we'll have those items addressed and working with them. But the mobile home park, we just, from a staff level, we designated that as a, a unique situation where they've been utilizing their property to the tree line where they saw fit. And the county does a lot of their, or does their zoning type permits for sheds and things like that. So, I mean, there's some discrepancies of where their property lines were. And ultimately, there is a, a mobile home on what would now be our property that would take significant amount of time, money and effort to move ten, fifteen feet, whatever that may be. So, that's why we had that as a separate lot, as well as it abutting our future public works expansion area. So, just a little guidance on how to navigate that lot of selling the property to the mobile home park, conveying the property to them, just deeding that property over to them, what the thoughts on that?
About how much land is it?
It's a little, sorry, I had the plat pulled up. It's like point six acres in total, I believe. Point eight five, thank you Hunter. It's a very narrow strip that's relatively unusable to us because we have all that other property for public works in the future as well.
Would there ever be a discussion with the park owner that, that land could potentially be sold to that party for use of their?
We, we haven't had any discussions yet because this is kind of our first step in that. But we did walk through there and just see the large amount of issues where lot lines are. And it really comes down to a financial situation of where does the city want to be at with helping navigate whether it's you need to move everything out of that property line or conveying the property to them. But hopefully, we can actually establish for future development, whether it's for public works or the mobile home park to establish that property line so we don't have future.
I'd advocate that we have a conversation, staff to property owner, and, and try and work out a agreement to purchase that property that they're using. I mean, you know, put ourselves in anyone else's shoes that just bought this parcel, they'd be looking to do the same, right? Limit our, limit our expense while we're trying to rectify the situation. No one, I don't think anyone here wants to see a mobile home have to be moved, right? So, I think maybe we take that first approach and then maybe we can be updated as it goes or.
Yeah, we, we can.
And make decisions.
Yeah, we can have that discussion with the property owner, manager on some of the issues. I'm sure they're aware of it because we've been walking around back there. But, so we'll have that discussion and follow up on the, how to go or where they wanna go from there. If they want to move their tri- their mobile home, that, that would be fine. But, but that's ultimately the discussion, I guess, we need to have with them and can follow up.
Council, is that fair? Is there a consensus?
All right. Funding updates. April and Hunter, you guys jump in as needed or as you see most appropriate. So, I know there's a lot here in these spreadsheets, so I think I'm gonna try to go through them. If there's questions that come up, ask as we go through them. Paper mill specific, let's, some of those we'll get to as we get to the paper mill site redevelopment later. So, we just wanna go through where we're at with some of our grant funding or some of it is lobbying funding, some of it is congressional funding. And both what we've been awarded, what we still have applications out for, what we anticipate future applications for, and then wanna talk in more depth about the mill site. So, this page here is funds that we're already awarded, so we've already applied for these, we've already been awarded. And then the last column is the year that we will receive the funds. So, Fifteenth Street North for right-of-way under the Surface Transportation Block Grant that has already been awarded. Funds become available in twenty twenty-seven. And then we have from that date, we have twenty years to construct the road. Is that accurate? Upon securing right-of-way.
Is that one for future use? Is that something you could add in a column of just when that expires?
When it has to be used by?
That was my first question, gonna be my first question is, alright, so we get the funds in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Do we have to spend two point two million that year?
The right-of-way, so for this, the right-of-way has to be acquired with that.
Correct, so in twenty twenty-seven, those, that block grant becomes available and this is just the right-of-way costs.
Right.
And then we do keep a more complex spreadsheet that notes on there that, then you have twenty years to come up with the funding to build it.
Okay.
But what about spending, what about the actual right-of-way acquisition? We have like, oh, two years?
Uh, the, two to three years on that.
Cause I'm guessing from a council perspective, you're showing us this to say, how the hell do you wanna plan for the three point five million dollars? Is that where we're going?
If it's on this spreadsheet, we've already accounted for it, yep.
And yeah, so my mind goes to what has to be, right? So, let's just take the top one regardless of the project, but we're getting nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, right? Uh, sorry, requested is.
So, the, so those two that are graded are two different funding sources for the same item. So, you're getting nine hundred and forty, just over nine hundred and forty-three thousand in the block grant. You're also getting a congressional amount from the federal level for just over two million. So, both of those combined cover all but seven hundred and sixty-two thousand of the right-of-way acquisition.
So, the seven hundred and sixty-two thousand is what we have budgeted for in our CIP, April, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
This one's kinda, that one's kinda confusing because they're overlapping.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say maybe, sorry, I'll just stop and we'll go through it.
And this is also assuming that the feds pass a budget.
Okay.
We are listed in congressional funding in all, all three of the representatives that we submitted through. So, if they pass a budget, then we would use those funds to help cover some of the match for the Surface Block Transportation Grant. So, essentially, our goal here is that we would have all of the right-of-way.
Already acquired.
Purchased for our cost of it of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Right, and I don't know if this sits on your question or not, maybe if it's some, but from a planning standpoint, we would probably start looking at getting appraisals for that right-of-way acquisition in twenty twenty-six. The feasibility report that was done last year already identifies that preferred corridor. So, we already know what property we need, but we would start that appraisal process probably the year before those funds would become available.
Sure. Okay, yeah, sorry, I derailed this.
No, that's why I wanna go through this, because we wanna make sure we talk all that through. So, the purpose of this, then get that right-of-way. And I would liken it to the county road that Walgreens is on, what is that? Conner Road one thirty-three project that was gonna connect out to Heritage that they never secured right-of-way. And then BD Exteriors built in the corner of that roundabout where it was supposed to connect. So, our, our goal here is we, instead of going for the whole thing, we decided to parcel it out and let's get the right-of-way. Let's map out where this road is gonna be and let's acquire that right-of-way and then we can start working towards construction. And so, this should get us for a little over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We can get all of the right-of-way, we have this accounted for in our capital improvement plan in twenty twenty-seven. Paper mill redevelopment, we're in the process right now of the deed contamination investigation. That's the phase two. That should be done this week. Pine Cone and Seventh Intersection is slated for a stoplight in twenty twenty-six. That was already awarded. Paper mill redevelopment for a carbon reduction program grant, which will cover the costs of planning and design of a recreational trail there, which promotes walking instead of driving. If you're wondering the tie to carbon reduction. And so, that has already been awarded and we'll be working on the design this winter.
And Tim, you could probably speak to this one much better, but that was a somewhat sleepy grant that we got through the APO and now City of Sartell shined a light on it. And so, City of Sartell probably doesn't see that grant funded for.
No, they, they've all chimed in and even Clies, Mayor Clies said, well, why, why couldn't we use it? And they said, you could've. And then he said, ah, and then he looked right at his planner and he said, we'll find a way.
Think Cloud did get a grant through the same program, but it was for charging stations.
Yeah.
It was the use for trail design that got questioned.
And they wanted to redo their lights in the parking garage. Denied. Point is, hey, that's an awesome grant that we got. None of us on council are ever gonna see that grant come through again.
Unless you wanna put charging stations up all over.
Thought we had something in the works for that, but that company.
Fell apart.
Oh.
No, it didn't. I was just thinking about that.
So, that'll get us the design for the trail, which is awesome. And then the last section of Heritage, Drive Trails, already funded for and planned for for twenty twenty-six. And then, of course, the two point five million in disaster funds through the last lobby effort here this last year for flooding issues over by Grizzly and the Wilds neighborhood. No match on that one, but accounted for that one for twenty twenty-four. So, all of what you see here is accounted for in our capital improvement plan. These are, these have already been awarded and are, are already in motion. These are two applications that are outstanding right now. The first is an MPCA stormwater grant, which does not have a mattress responsibility and it allows us to essentially add it with the CRP, carbon reduction planning for the trail and be able to do stormwater design at the same time. So that we could have the site planned for stormwater and have that box checked for redevelopment, which would be awesome. So.
The, the idea on that is to do stormwater treatment on a regional whole-site level instead of each individual lot at that site having to do their own.
So, that's what that grant would allow us to be able to do. The second item there, and if any of you have connections with Benton County Commissioners, feel free to call them. BEP Benton Economic Partnership reached out and said that they were looking for projects that might qualify under ARPA funding. They wanted it specifically tied to development, development and potentially any housing that it could provide. And then, of course, Benton County, which obviously this site is a massive site potent, you know, tax-based potential for Benton County. So, we put together a, a return on investment for the site and then a request to be able to have some of, essentially half of their ARPA funding to be able to get utilities set up at the site. So, our thought would be that if we can get utilities put under the trail design and trail construction and do stubs, we at least get utilities to the site and could use some of their ARPA funding for that. So, these are outstanding. No matches on either. I anticipate by end of year. April, you think for stormwater, will we hear by the end of the year?
Uh, probably January, February.
Okay. This might be a little bit on both these. I'm hopeful that Benton County will be by the end of the year. They have to use those funds by twenty twenty-four and they're taking. They have to use those funds by 2024, and they're taking applications from all of their cities within Benton County, and, but they specifically wanted to know ROI. There weren't, weren't too many projects that could lay out ROI as easily as ours.
What specific utilities do we need there? Isn't our main sewer water line go there?
We have, yeah, we have water and sewer trunks running from the bridge over to Benton. This would extend them north along the trail, so that you could get utilities to the existing building that's there, stubs for any future development within the site, and then if there's a park shelter with restrooms or something on that north end, it would...
So it's really, build out of utilities which are, which already exist on the site in some location, right? Cause we have a main power line or power source already on the site as well, right?
So this would be water and sewer utilities, correct?
Okay.
And the dam site does have water and sewer, but small scale.
Sure.
I don't know where those go, or how it gets there.
There's a river nearby.
We're gonna re-hook them up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so those are outstanding, yep. These are ones that are upcoming, we know and we're watching for, and/or have submitted letters of interest. So a lot of these projects, especially the ones through the APO, you submit a letter of interest first, they kind of give you a first blush of like, don't waste your time, or yes, we think this is a valuable project. So it doesn't necessarily commit us to anything, but at least puts us out there that, hey, we're thinking about this project. On the paper mill one, we'll get to that on the paper mill side of things, but just take note of, so these would be railroad crossing elimination grants, which means that, under it, we would have to agree to eliminate the current crossing that's there by the church, and you'd be building an overpass to go over it. And so, we would agree to eliminate that, you'd cross over it. There's a design grant, and then there's a construction grant. BNSF has given support, obviously they appreciate anytime you can eliminate a crossing, but it's not at a small price. And these would be matches that we have not accounted for. Some of this, I think, will be or needs to be flushed out with Anita when we start working on concept plans. So it's just kind of there as a placeholder right now, the application is not open, and so, we're just watching for it, and Anita's coming to the next council meeting workshop on the 27th.
I did talk to our funding specialist today, they said November is when that one would come out, so we're anticipating it soon. Hunter's been working with our traffic group on just some high-level estimates, that's what we have up here. We would refine those numbers a little bit more. But, it's not fully eliminating the crossing, it's just going from a at-grade crossing to a grade-separated crossing, which is beneficial for a number of reasons.
The biggest piece to take note of those two items, when we get to the paper mill discussion, and then also the lobbying discussion, is the, the match amount. So those are not dollars, you know, 3 million right there, not dollars that we have accounted for in our CAP, or that we have access to, and likely something that will, we would need to leverage. Some form of state funding, whether that's deed or just connections and partnerships there. So, we'll get to those, but it just, they're, they're a little bit bigger animals than the rest of them. The Transportation Alternatives Grant is a program that's allowed, or issued every year by the APO, so they just took letters of interest, submitted a letter of interest for the Fifteenth Street South and Pine Cone Road intersection. I know you've all seen the compliments and complaints reports that has, that continues to be one that we are requested for often. We have historically kind of pushed that one off, saying that we are hopeful that development of Robert's Road would be the appropriate crossing there, but I think with the pace of development, that's probably a long-term ideal, and with the increased traffic and demand and pedestrians, this seems to be a really hot area for us.
So, the Transportation Alternatives Grant is a federal grant, and it can cover up to 80% of the construction cost. The remaining 20%, and any soft costs, would be a local responsibility. The project itself would not include a crossing at Fifteenth Street South. The preferred crossing is at Robert's Road, so it includes a sidewalk or pedestrian way from Fifteenth Street South down to Robert's Road, and then a flashing crosswalk system at Robert's Road. We would look at, instead of doing the mast arms, like we're gonna be installing on Heritage Drive this winter, we would look at purchasing right-of-way, a normal stoplight arm that can be reused then when that stoplight goes in. But just want to be upfront with what that project includes, because it wouldn't be a crossing at Fifteenth Street South.
So it would include sidewalk, or bike path, or whatever, all the way down to Robert's Road on the west side?
West side, correct?
Yeah, so they wouldn't have to cross there.
And I'd also be interested to see, over time, as 19th Avenue finished with, with the use there, you know, for a long time, that, that development was completely on an island of Pine Cone to the east, and 19th Avenue, which was extremely dangerous to the west. And now that 19th Avenue has gotten done, it'd be interesting to see kind of this next summer.
Pedestrian traffic, yeah.
If it's truly pedestrian traffic that's just looking to go out for a bike or a walk or a run, versus pedestrian traffic with the sole intent of getting to the Pine Cone, Colburn's area. And I think that helps us determine maybe urgency of that.
There's also been some discussion at the APO level, and April, you probably might have heard it, the TAC. You're, you're the one that goes to TAC?
No, actually, it's Carrie.
Oh, you go to TAC, okay, I didn't know that. I did know that now that I think about it. That St. Cloud is very interested in expanding and improving. Someone's gonna have to help me with the road, that was the detour road for the new roundabout on County Road 4, what was the detour?
Three...
Oh!
322nd.
Yeah.
Yeah, 322nd Street. They, their council, or a couple of their representatives kind of approached me and said, that's the continuation of Robert's Road from where our Robert's Road comes down and connects at that intersection. And so, they wanted to know our interest in, if they push forward on that 322nd Street being widened and improved, connecting it to where Robert's Road would come in and/or County Road 4. And they, I said, with everything going in on 19th, we have a lot of construction in that area that kind of filters that direction now. So, they asked us what our intent was, if we were going to potentially team with them, and, and try to get a, a new main thorough, thorough way through that area. I...
You said yes?
I did, I, I signed, I signed off on Assistant Mayor, something.
So with the construction of 19th Avenue South, we did meet with Derns County and just those intersections along the county road. And there was discussion, we've got a water main that runs for the extension of, of Robert Roads and, and the new alignment. So the, the counties led a lot of those discussions too with St. Cloud and us. And the thought is, after seeing where 19th comes in and where that future intersection would be, initial discussions with county would want a roundabout at that location, and 19th potentially be a ride-in, ride-out. And all those are just initial discussions, and I'm sure it'll morph and transform as things develop. But, it's a discussion that's been initiated with 19th Avenue South.
Yeah, it's a little bit of spaghetti, all those roads coming to fruition right there on the edge of town for us, and beautiful storage link there. Sorry, Carrie, had to throw it up there.
And so, the other, well, can I, so clarification, are, is the, we submitted a letter intent for the Fifteenth Street South and Pine Cone Road. Is that a grant you want to, can you continue to move forward with and submit a full application here in the next couple of months? Or we can wait until we see what they say about the LOI and come back at that time?
Yeah, that's true, they will provide input on if they think it's a viable application or not.
And I guess it maybe goes back to the first question I was trying to ask. So, parlayed to this specific one, Fifteenth Street South, Pine Cone Road. Just so that we as council know what financial levers we have to pull, we're saying that money, if we're awarded, that money would be available in 2027. Question I would have is, when do we have to spend it by?
I believe it's two years, one year, eh, two years. So, with the, the federal funding starts in fall and goes, so 2028 into 2029.
Cause to me, that allows us a lot more, the more flexibility we have from award time to when we have to spend it by, allows us a lot better ability to plan, and/or future council to plan. If it's, hey, should we do this and be awarded and build in 2027? I feel like we become under the gun a little bit, even though it's four years out. We're a little bit under the gun to say, shit, I, I don't know right now, but if we have until 2029...
So the, the progression though is, it's federal money, so you have to do a project memorandum. That would need to be, so the design and planning would need to be done in 2026. The funds become available in 2027, you construct 2027, 2028, close it out. So, it's not like you can start the project construction in 2029, the, the funds have to be done. So if it's a 2027 grant, you really should plan on utilizing some of those funds in 2027, and it's, it's a, over that construction period.
Does that include design?
Design would be the year before that, which is not covered by the grant.
And then the other thing I would say, and, and I know we, we have to make a decision and start planning for it, but much like the Heritage Trail one, where we were a little, I personally was a little surprised, and I'm sure I heard about it, but it was like, we're putting all that money there, and it was from a grant similar to this, that we'd already, previous council had committed to. Point in saying all that, in two years, if the east side of Pine Cone develops at Fifteenth Street, or Fifteenth Streets continues, and I get we have to plan for this, but I also want us as a council to be thinking like, what is the future of that corridor, so that we don't come here in 2027 and go, hey, we're gonna build this bike path, because we got money to do it.
To that point, the next grant listed on here is the 2026 Heritage Trail Match. And so, the city has been awarded a transportation alternative grants already for that last phase of the Heritage Drive Trail. Can only cover 80% of construction. There's an active transportation grant that is what this next lying item is. It allows you to get state funds to cover that remaining 20%. You can't go after those state funds until the federal funds are already awarded. So it's, you have to make that commitment upfront, but if we end up applying for the Fifteenth Street South and Pine Cone Road Crossing Grant for the federal, next year, we can apply for the state funding under the Active Transportation for the remaining 20%. City still has to cover the local match for the soft costs for design.
So you can stack them, essentially.
You can, you can stack those. It'll be interesting to see how that Active Transportation Grant goes, how many requests they get. The last couple of years, they've had quite a bit of funding, and they've actually asked to advance that Heritage Drive Trail 2026. We did advance it to 2025, and more people are getting wind that there's this money out there, and so there's more applications coming in. But you can stack them.
And I would say, based on what we've heard from grant sources thus far, there's the, the money pouring into these, like, if we're ever gonna contrib, like, put applications out there and, and try to get grant funds.
Sure. Well, and maybe, again, I want to hear from everyone, I guess, but maybe we need to be pulled back out of the weeds a little bit more. Right now, we're asked, hey, would you support a bike path on the west side of Pine Cone from Fifteenth Street South down to Robert's Road, and then a crosswalk arm there, right? If we pull back even further to say, hey, council, would you support a trail on both sides of Pine Cone? Right? Because if, if we in the future end up with a trail from Fifteenth Street down to Robert's Road, like, shouldn't we think longer term to have a trail from Heritage down to Fifteenth Street South? If that's that busy of a corridor? And as that all develops out, like, that would be our longer-range vision versus potentially having, you know, one side or the other, or...
I agree, and one of the things we have identified in 2024 is, we did a crosswalk study back in 2017, and we did a trail gaps map in 2018, and we're starting to fill those in. And we need to revisit those and revisit with council on what those priorities are. One of the reasons we wanted to review this at workshop tonight is, in all of these cases, we need a resolution passed before these applications are due of support, and in that resolution, it is somewhat specific. So that's why I want to be transparent of what that project is. Cause whichever ones, or any of them, or none of them, that council wants to move forward with, at the next council meeting, we will have a resolution on there for that specific project.
One, I mean, just to add to that, is obviously looking for your support for, in preparation of the resolution coming, and, and frankly, you know, your trust in us, to your point, Ryan, of, you know, the weeds of like, hey, we, we obviously are watching these programs and trying to stack them, and working with Rob on the financial part, and trying to eliminate the burden on, on the city as much as possible. But, we also try to watch pretty closely to complaints that we get, and requests that we get from people. So, some of which you see in the compliments and complaints, some of which go to our info email, and go straight to April, or straight to John, or, and I'd say this is by far the most complained about crossing, just because there is a lot, especially the Arbor Trails area over there, there is a lot of development on that side of Sartell. Second to this would be Second Street and Pine Cone. Yep, that one has really spiked recently of, of that roundabout there. I, it's very confusing to people, and it's...
Well, I think they see the, and I would wholeheartedly agree, they see the new roundabouts and the functional technology there that with the, with the flashing lights, and, hey, why don't we have it on our most used one? Fair question, right?
I was just gonna suggest the same thing, is we should be looking at this probably through the lens of what are the most complaints we receive, either collectively, individually. And those two certainly come to the top of my mind.
Fifteenth Street South has been years upon, like, that one, I, I feel like has been pretty consistent.
It has.
For multiple years, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would, I think I don't know, I've, I lived in that neighborhood early on, and it, it's chaos to try and get out of there. It's frogger to try and cross, it's not safe, absolutely agree, we should, I personally would say absolutely agree we should do that. I'm just, I would really want us to have the broader conversation though as well. I look at like Second Street South, also busy, has bike path or walking path on both sides of the road. Right? Cause, and so that, really trying to set up that five, six years from now, there's not a council wondering, why did we not ever move from Fifteenth Street to Heritage? Or from, I mean, if you look at this stretch here, just north of here, we've got it on both sides of the road. So, just trying to have the longer-range conversations, so that we can, we can plan for it and highlight to people that when they see, hopefully see that being built, that there is a plan, and we're not just super responsive to just one issue and then moving on.
April, I wonder if we should, I mean, I think at a future workshop, let's bring that plan forward, and that pedestrian and crossing plan, because it does need to be updated. I think we can look at that as, to Ryan's point, more holistically, like, this is one application, but, I mean, similar to the Heritage Drive Trail, like, we had to do that in sections, and I could see this being very similar, especially if development keeps on Pine Cone on that side of the road. But we should really look at the holistic plan, big picture.
I agree, I, I mean, if you look even at how Robert Roads is with all the apartments going in, one side's trail and the other side's turning into sidewalk. So, is it a trail on both sides that prefer a sidewalk on one, trail on the other? And, I don't think if you do, if you decide a trail and sidewalk, whatever, on both sides, I'm not sure you get that whole trail at one time, and so, this could be that first section. Or, I, I mean, if you want to hold off and wait till you can look at the bigger picture, we, we can do that as well. I just, to Anna's point, there's money out there right now.
You should be getting feedback though on your letter of intent, and then circle back with us.
Yes, however, I'm not sure we'll get feedback on the letter intent bef, well, this one, we can, we can bring this resolution later. This one's not due till January, yes.
I know that would be very helpful for me, is to better understand the long-term plan, I think as you said. I, not, not only, I probably need to have a map up here, just maybe I haven't paid attention to nine... I, not, not only, I probably need to have a map up here, just maybe I haven't paid attention in nine years, you keep jumping from road to road and I, it's hard for me to keep up of like what, what's in the plan. My concern really comes from the capital improvement plan and what's funded and what's not funded. You know, ultimately, I love the grants and loves to go forward with it, but I think we're gonna have other pressures coming at us, uh, in the next few years specifically. And so getting committed to some of these things and some of the matches, it may be that we need to take a year off of, of our longer term plan and, you know, go from a five to a seven year plan on, on whatever we think those things are over a period of time so that we can kinda stick to some of the things that we committed to in the longer term financial plans surrounding debt and some of the other things that we've talked about, so.
And then, April, you covered the Heritage, Heritage Trail match, so that's basically a stack on top of, uh, an already awarded application that will be taking place in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Right, if that's awarded, it'll just, um, reduce the local match that Rob's already accounting for.
Um, the LRIP Local Road Improvement Program, so that funding is specifically ra- related to something that would drive economic development, specifically transportation too, but.
Regional, more regional-ish roads, yeah.
Looks like a good candidate.
Yeah, the Leander Roundabout, um, a few thoughts on this one. This is included currently in our, our lobbyist bonding request of twenty-two and a half million. However, also recognizing that, um, you know, the likelihood of getting that full amount, like anything we can do to stack dollars there would be helpful to get, be able to use this as a match to the bonding request would be incredible to be able to say like, hey, we've got some match funds there, um, and then we just also know that that roundabout, from a development perspective, is necessary and really, really crucial and important, so.
Just of note on that one, the max you can ask is a million dollars, a million dollars does not get you the entire Leander roadway. It gets you the roundabout and possibly the connection south to where it turns into urban, so just so you're aware, it doesn't cover that whole roadway.
But a little bit.
But the roundabout, yeah.
Take everything we can get. And then the Paper Mill Trail, which we'll get to in a little bit here, for the actual recreational portion of the Paper Mill site. So these are all ones that we have our eyes on. Before we would submit full applications, we'll come back to council for resolutions to support and I think we can have more in-depth conversations, we just wanted to be able to at least get some context out there so that when we have those conversations, you're not completely floored of like, whoa, what the heck is that about or where did that come from?
The one we do have to bring to the next council meeting, the full, um, LRIP application for the Leander Roundabout is due early December. Um, so that is a resolution, if council wants to move forward with that, we would need to bring back sooner.
To the next.
Zero map sounds very enticing.
Yes.
Um, just of note on that Paper Mill Trail, the active transportation grant, those funds have to be spent in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, which I think will be difficult for a lot of agencies to do. Um, you're sitting well because we have the CRP grant, um, and that trail will get designed in twenty twenty four. You'll be set up for construction in twenty twenty five, so, um, that covers a good portion of, um, the, the CRP grant you already got covers a, will cover that portion of the soft costs that some of these other projects don't have the benefit of.
When we have the conversation of kind of a broader trail network and needs, can we speak specific at that point to the Paper Mill Trails system and timing and that type of stuff?
At a future workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, and that'll be key, cause I mean, as you know, we've got, how, you know, we're gonna own property all the way up to almost to that crossing on the East Side River Road. And one of the funding sources that has said that they are committed to provide letters of support and, and, um, funds for us is to connect to the Great River Road Trail, Bike Trail, which is just on the other, you know, so the regional significance of that site to be able to tap into that regional network. Okay, you can go to the next one. Um, so this is just a couple of initial summaries, so other items that we're watching for right now, um, the deed redevelopment funds for the Paper Mill site, that has to be applied for with a developer that's interested. And then we also, we're waiting for the Phase Two to be completed, um, you, you either, now that we've done the investigation grant, you either go for the cleanup or you go for redevelopment, and so we're waiting for that Phase Two to be done. And so that one's outstanding, Central Minnesota Healthcare Hub, um, we'll get to that when we get to the lobbying portion, but, uh, you guys all saw in the Friday update that we had a successful tour with them on Thursday. The Grizzly Drainage, uh, we're watching for additional FEMA disaster funds there. Like I mentioned, there's the cleanup portion of the deed grant depending on the Phase Two that comes back. And then, um, Rob has submitted our projects to be on the PFA Project Priority List for West Side Water and Sewer and then the Water Tower, which provides low interest loans instead of having to go out for bond for them. And then there's multiple DNR, LCCMR type grants that come available that will, last year we had submitted to them, we didn't own the site in time and, um, so they encouraged us to apply again, cause they're very interested in seeing that trail network with the mill site, so waiting for those to open up as well.
Uh, one thing to add to that, um, the APO last week discussed that they're going to be revisiting their Safeway to school or Safe Routes to School funding, um, and they had Sartell to revisit as they were, last time we're here in twenty nineteen, or they said every five years, they like to go back to the city um, and kinda re-study what, or, or listen to what that might be a concern, since we have the new high school out there and.
The last Safe Routes to School grant we got, um, did sidewalks over on Second, a, a lot of projects, the project we did around the, um, uh, middle school, River View. In there, we also included some different, um, push button flasher systems that ended up not getting awarded, so um, I think there is an opportunity with Safe Routes to School to get some of these crossing, push button flashers at the roundabouts or some of these critical spots close to schools.
So that is in the works and they intentionally are mentioned Sartell as being, need to go back and revisit Sartell, cause I think they're doing some stuff in Suck Rapids and, and St. Cloud right now, so.
I also think, um, so kind of, and with the guidance you're looking for here is, um, Thirty-Fifth, Persky was in my ear the other day about, uh, Town Line Road and how that's gonna be the main road to get to the high school, which means Thirty-Fifth is gonna get even worse than it is today. The trail, there's a trail there, but it ends, you know, short of a larger developments for us and so I think anything we can do to extend the trail from there out to the Blackberry Neighborhood is needed, and I know we've heard that in the past too, but.
We submitted a grant years ago and, um, weren't successful. That one becomes a little challenging just because it does turn into a rural road, um, to fit a trail along there, but not impossible. Um, it's also challenging because it's city and then township and then city and then township again, but, um, that's good to know, we'll keep that one on the radar.
Yeah, cause I kind of had tucked that one aside, so that's a good one to keep.
Yeah, and I'm not, there's a lot of emotion tied to that one.
Yep.
Uh, from that neighborhood, and so I'm not suggesting we revisit that right now, but certainly is worth thinking about, as you mentioned, Safe Routes to School. Push buttons are obviously key, but if they're looking for structurally, what are we gonna do?
That'd be a good.
We've tied up a lot of loose ends on all other schools.
To be completely blunt, it's a very expensive trail for the number of residents and with Safe Routes to School money, it is federal money, so there's we do it all the time, prob- project memorandum, some environmental stuff, I mean, we can do it, it's just, it becomes costly, but.
Something to just keep our eyes on.
Yep.
Council, any other guidance on funding errors or questions?
So for the Safe Routes, or, I guess kinda on that same note, if you look along, just cause I walk it every day almost from the high school, the current trail to get before it ends and that's cracked and weeds and everything, so if we can identify ones like that at the same time, I think will be beneficial too.
We've been trying to, when we do road reconstruction projects, to also redo the trails because they're, right, they have a lifespan just like anything else. Um, and we learned when we overlaid Nineteenth Avenue North, um, we didn't have the funds to do the trail, that's why we came back and did it later. But as we're doing overlays and, um, reconstruction projects, I think it will be important to also evaluate the trails and sidewalk systems at that same time.
Yeah, I wish you probably, I mean, when we look at the holistic plan, let's kinda talk about that from a capital improvement standpoint too, cause I think we have a massive network of trails, which we're super proud of, but capturing the long-term maintenance cost of those things, um, it's super flashy and fun to put trails in, except for when they're cracked and weeds and needing to be.
That was actually one of the questions on the bus with the senators. Uh, we highlighted seventy-five miles of trails and the one question they asked was, how do you maintain them? How do you pay to maintain them? I said what you said, so.
Perfect.
I, when you said that now, of like, yeah, we do it when we do the roadway, like, good, that's what I told them, so.
John can speak to this, cause he's the one that educated me on it, but, um, you know how we seal coat roads and there's a benefit to that, um, in, in John's years and research, we don't seal coat trails because it actually deteriorates them quicker from, what are you seeing?
Yeah, I mean, over the years, we, I've been to a lot of different seminars and places and everybody's in the same boat, they put all these trails there and they go, now what do you do with them? We used to, we used to seal coat them, we used to do a lot, most of them, uh, Three Rivers Park System is there, that was one of the best seminars I went to, they go, we'd let them run their life, then we'd mill and overlay them and just, just keep overlaying them. It's, it's no sense to keep spending this money to seal coat and it's just crack film that best you can, get the weeds out of them, let them run their life, or when we do projects, just overlay them, milling overlay.
And just mow them, when, when the weeds get so high, we just need to mow them?
Yeah.
Where, I mean, you guys had some trails a number of years ago that were turning into weeds and didn't have the money to maintain them, you actually put them back to gra- like.
We ground some, there's one over in the wilds.
By dog walking path?
That was in the era where, where we were putting trails around these ponds where the willows were and the willows were just eating our trails to death and, you know, it was just better just to grind them up and leave them like gravel.
All those neighbors are thankful, cause they think it's their backyard right to the pond. And I walked through there all the time with my dog and they're looking at me like, I'm like.
Oh, that one, yeah, that one we grasped.
Yeah, that's grass now.
Yeah, it's grass now, we didn't even grind that one.
The, the only, um, one I have that hits my radar is the Water Tower and we've talked about it a lot. It's not a sexy thing for us as a city versus these other trails and everything else. Love us to continue having conversation as we see development likely slowing quickly. What's our need on water, what's our, what are we projecting that off of? Not for tonight, but a, a future conversation of just that Water Tower and then we've also had conversations of, hey, is it best to put it in the air or in the ground? But.
So the, the, um.
Sexier in the air.
Till you have to repaint it every ten years.
John says he always wants to sell advertisement on it and another revenue stream.
Pushing, pushing.
When it comes to the Water Tower, we're already on a little bit of borrowed time. Um, our water group would have liked to seen it done, um, a year sooner than what Rob was budgeting for currently, but our capital improvement plan or comp plan around water and sewer, uh, was last updated in two thousand eighteen. We've got those budgeted to, um, update again in twenty twenty eight, we usually do those about every, every ten years. We did a couple of years ago do a, um, separate Water Tower study in preparation for, uh, this project, identified a couple of sites, um, and so it's a multi-year process. Um, so we'll start designing two years before it's gotta go in the air, but we'll bring some of that information back, absolutely, Mayor Fitzom just. I'm not sure we're pushing the Water Tower out any more than we already have, but we'll definitely ask a question and bring that information to you.
And the study and just the demand of what drives that decision, I think would be good. Is I think what he's, yeah, makes sense. Okay, mill site funding. Um, so multiple grant applications, we've talked about some of them already, the deed contamination investigation, which was for the Phase Two. It's great to have deed support already, um, Matt Veralek, the commissioner, lives just north of the mill site, um, along Oak Hill Golf Club, so it'll be awesome to have him visit at some point. He's very familiar with the site, he spoke about it at the Brownfields Conference that we were at. Carbon Reduction Program for the trail design, stormwater planning, the Benton County ARPA funds, railroad elimination and trail grant, so just keep all of those in mind as we're navigating through some of this mill site funding. You can go to the next one. And then you also heard me mention at the, I think the last, one of the last council meetings about the EPA Brownfields Grant Opportunity. So one of their requirements is that you have to complete a Phase One within six months of owning the property to show your due diligence, otherwise you take on as a city the liability for any contaminants on that site. We were at eight months instead of six months because of delays due to a variety of different issues. And they do not allow any exceptions to that timeline, however, when we were at the Brownfields Conference, I think it was super enlightening and helpful for us to hear of other people's experiences around using this program and just how extensive it is and then the rap that's required with it, the remediation plan is a three to five year plan that you have to set up for EPA Brownfields, so it's for many projects, they spent three years just at a standstill while they were working on this rap. In addition, you, you know, the Phase Two might not even show that we need Brownfields funding, so this one might have been a blessing in disguise. Um, there are multiple other programs between the MPCA and the deed that will likely be much easier for us to navigate. Um, we'll know more by the end of this week, once we have the Phase Two and know the exact contamination results, but um, the only reason you would apply for the EPA Brownfields Grant is to do cleanup on severe contamination, so. Just a couple timelines of next steps, so we've got the Phase Two coming, final report we're expecting this week. Concept plans from Anna, what?
Keep saying the end of this week.
Then at the seventeenth?
Uh, yep, and we have the results of the test pits, but our contractor pushed back on us for the, um, soil borings. So I'm just waiting for Jennifer on the contractor's final schedule on the soil borings, but we will have preliminary results by the end of this week. Just we.
Not the actual report.
Because the contractor, right.
So close.
So we'll see it this week?
So we'll have that by the end of this week. And then Anita's coming for the workshop after our, our November twenty-seventh meeting to review concept plans, um, and then also talk about marketing and branding of the site, concept plans of the site, phases of the site, like future, um, public input, like basically next steps for that redevelopment strategy. I think we should chat with her a little bit about, you know, these efforts around the railroad crossing and what we're hearing from developers is that is a, like, kind of a deal breaker, that access point. But I think talking through conceptionally, what does that mean and, and like, what, how does it restrict us and or help hurt us, um, potential cost for it? And then as Tim alluded to earlier, when we were talking about the Fourth Avenue, like at some point, we'll have to make some decisions around RFQ, RFI, RP process, like how do we find brokers, developers? The one thing that has been encouraging is that, um, you could run and, and we talked to a couple developers at the Brownfields Conference about this, like run the railroad crossing elimination, so above grade crossing at the same time as you're running development on the site. Those two things could be happening parallel with each other. The, splitting the redevelopment into two phases going forward, so Phase One being the really the recreational aspect of it and really just trying to, hey, how do we get people to the site? Like get them across a pedestrian bridge, so it's not a bridge in nowhere, it's get them on the site and get it to drive development on the site and for developers to see that there's some action happening on the site. And then Phase Two would be really focused on the, um, cross elimination, overpass concept and redevelopment of what Anita calls as the belly of the site.
Bless you.
So if you go to the next one, this is just like a super, super, super conceptual. Anita's plans, concept plans will be significant, significantly higher level than this, but we wanted to give you kind of an idea of what does that trail look like as a? what does that trail look like as a phase one of like, basically, you know, anything in the belly of the site is gonna likely continue to wait until we continue redevelopment efforts and figure out that crossing. But at least getting people onto the site for the, um, pedestrian area, and then there is a cool, like, overlook kind of concrete platform that we think could have some more immediate development potential, and then of course, there's the docks and the kind of the park area to the north, so. Um, Anita will go through more of that, but just kind of wanted to conceptually give you guys an idea of we have that buffer along the river anyways, so it's, this is what we'll be working on this winter is designing more specifics around this trail. It's tough for us to design the trail connection to Benton Drive without knowing whether we're gonna have an at-grade or above-grade crossing, so. Um, that'll have to get determined first. This is just to give you some confidence in our planning and how we're trying to um, schedule out multiple different facets to this site, and you can just kind of see a lot of it happening at the same time, trying to run things parallel. Um, take advantage of, you know, funding opportunities that are out there. Then.
Who owns this? Like, who's?
We've got, it's SEH at Meda, but we've got a copy going back and forth.
Okay.
Um, if you go to the next one, Rob, it just shows in yellow is the actual redevelopment efforts, and that's assuming like private par- property, anything above that in the green is public.
That's aggressive.
Yep.
Twenty twenty-six?
I made her put it that.
I'm thinking, eh, another ten years maybe.
I'm, I'm upset that it's taken that long, so as long as I, I allowed the stretch to be. More than anything, I like, I just, I think if we can get people onto the site, like, the clock is ticking and people are anxious about like, we can't use the excuse anymore that we don't own the site, so.
Yeah, I guess that was my comment earlier of having a conversation about the trail system is I hear a ton from people wanting to be able to get onto the site or from the east side, cross the river, and so, sounds perfect.
Yeah. So this project is super fluid, as you guys know, I mean, I feel like it, every time I open that spreadsheet of timelines or talk to Anita, it changes, but I think the phase two will be really timely and then wrapping up Anita's work will be really timely, leading us into twenty twenty-four, so. Um, go ahead, the next one. Next one's lobbying, just so you guys are prepared when those requests come forward, so we have our twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four, um, Ryan and I have a call with Marty next Tuesday?
Yep.
Um, to talk about our efforts and we can kind of give them a, catch them up to speed on the capital investment tour that, uh, we did on last Thursday and just partnership efforts with Central Care and UVA Medical School. So recognizing that that's our primary focus on the lobbying side, but also recognizing that we think somewhere between three to five million on the mill site, three million at a minimum if we're gonna go through that, go for that rail crossing elimination, will be necessary to match grant funds there and get that site ready to be developed, so whether that's through deed or a separate appropriation or federally congressional, congressionally funded projects, I to be determined, but there's, there's going to need to be a level of legislative commitment to that site.
I'm always surprised by the state-level awareness of what they perceived as job loss with the mill going away. I mean, most time I have that conversation, there's, there's some awareness to that. We lost a major, you know, employer and tax base and all sorts on that. And I, I think there's a story, obviously, we can leverage when it needs to be going forward, so.
So that was part of the conversation that Anna and I had had as we kind of strategized around what's our ask, right, and so we didn't want to confuse the two. We've got two big legislative asks to the state of Minnesota. One is twenty-two million dollars to the Central Minnesota Healthcare Hub. And then we've got a large multimillion-dollar ask, and I'm not sure if we fully know what that ask is yet.
Right.
For the, uh, paper mill site, and we didn't want to confuse the senators, Congress on, Sartell's just asking for everything.
Right.
Right, and so it's like, when they were here, it's like, hey, what is your priority? And our priority to them was Central Minnesota Healthcare Hub. Tim, to your point, um, Governor Walz was here early in his ten years governor, uh, for Topin Merrill that Anita was part of, and Anita, myself, and I think it was Doug Bozer at the time, had a small intimate conversation with Walz about the mill site, about the job loss, and he committed to us that his group will absolutely help in whenever we make that ask, and so we talked, hey, it's probably better to go that route, especially with deed support. Um, just from a strategy perspective, and I don't want to, I, I know we're on camera, I don't want to let too much of the secret sauce out there, but go that route and look for support from a governor level, through their cabinets. And then let Senate, Congress really help support us in that Central Minnesota Healthcare Hub, so.
Uh, that's a strong strategy, I agree with that.
Okay. We made it through funding. That was a lot. We'll come back with a couple takeaways, April, come back with pedestrian crossings, trail plan, and then also, uh, make sure we have a little more education and discussion around water tower. Um, Ryan and I had our first meeting this last week with Stacy for, uh, policy governance and started to lay out some of our meetings. Um, she would like to do kind of an initial educational meeting and then also just initial discussion with council around the model and policies. She said in a perfect world, two and a half hours, but I don't, you know, I, I don't know that we necessarily have to give that full amount, but that was what she thought would absolutely be suffice, at least for this initial meeting. Um, do we want to do that opportunity before a council meeting, after a council meeting, a completely separate night? She asked about a Saturday morning.
We said no.
We said no.
Thank you.
To be fair, we said no, there's people on council that have young children at home.
Yeah, we have volunteered.
So for you to be the ones that said, absolutely no.
We volunteered you.
I'm really busy on that time.
I, I think, personally think it's hard after council meetings.
Yeah, that's what Ryan had shared with her.
Especially if it's a lot of detailed information.
And it, I think it will be, yeah. And it probably gets to be difficult beforehand because, I mean, Alex, it's tough for you to get here by, you'd have to essentially be here by three-thirty to play it safe with a council meeting starting at six.
I think initially at, at sep- sorry.
No, sorry.
I think initially a separate night would be best, I think a few later down the road, you can do them before, after. That first jaunt of me learning this process was a lot to get your head around, so it's nice not to be focused on other things. Um, and Stacy, uh, God bless her, she also speaks very early and slow, and so it's, the, it can get a little long because it's policy governance for two and a half hours, so.
We had thirty minutes and it was a lot, I won't lie, um. But I agree, I, I, I don't think we're, we as a council are gonna really get into it sitting at the dais here, knowing that we've got a deadline, that we've got a kit for council. I'd prefer that we get to a, a community center where, where maybe we can sit in a different setting and be comfortable, um, and work through this, it's I've never been through it, I've been through thirty minutes with Anna and Stacy and there's gonna be a lot, it's.
And Stacy's extremely passionate, so she, to make sure you hit every, um, facet of it, which is awesome in the end. At the beginning, it's just really hard to, to get up and, and running, so.
Well, we only have one meeting in December, maybe we try to do like second or, you know, before the holidays start, I know she would prefer to get something on the schedule in end of November or December if we can.
And, and I'd say I'd, if we can make that work, great. I'd lean more towards, hey, let's do it when, when we all of council has the time, and if that means January, that means January. Uh, if one council member can't make it, or, hey, we can only give him an hour and a half.
Yep.
I just, I, I think we all need to realize and, and you certainly will in the first twenty minutes spending with Stacy, this is going to be a heavy lift for all of us for better than a year. Like, this, I went into this thinking, in some of the pre-work she provided, you'll have pre-work, um, of like, hey, you know, we can probably move through this in Q1, we've got some stuff that we can, like, and I haven't talked to you about it, but I'm sure it took you a, a long time, or?
Well, it was developed when I got there, so it took me a long time to get accustomed to it, and then the monitoring report part piece, for you, you guys to learn, that takes a long time as well, because developing all the, um, responses to prohibitions and responses and measurements and, um, justifications and, uh, and then council learning how to be able to comment on each of those, um, that's the second part of, after the governance program is, is developed.
Yeah, in her proposal, like, the coaching and training of us using this was the largest portion. Like, creating the actual policy itself, I get the impression that that is gonna be the easy part, which terrifies me. It's gonna be after that where you learn how to actually apply it, that. So she was proposing the December fourth or eleventh, but I'll, I'll go back to her and ask for later dates, just so that we can make sure we can dedicate two, two and a half hours and that it's on a separate night and that we're all able to be there and focus our attention on it and.
I always, I also think it's really important that we don't s- stop and start.
Mm-hmm.
Because it is a succession, you know, there would be places where she might be able to say, hey, this is a good spot where you guys kind of get it now, we can move to the next phase or, or take a break, but you know, once you start building it, you kind of want to keep going.
Yeah, and there's parts where, she talked with Ryan and I about, like, there's parts where her and I can go kind of work on stuff and then bring it back to you guys and then do another rendition and bring it back, so we'll try to keep the council extra meetings at a minimum if we can, but I think these first couple ones will be really key.
So it begs a obvious question is, you're making a big investment into an elected council. What, I mean, what happens, you know, in three, four years when council flips, you, all this investment is, you know, whatever, where, where does it go? It stays here with staff and you just incorporate it into the next council, is that something viable?
The policy still lives.
Okay.
The policy document still lives, but it becomes a tool that you orientate new council members with.
Okay.
It's legitimate, I have that same question, because unlike a, and I brought this out with Stacy, is unlike a for-profit, non-for-profit board, like, you somewhat select that board, my assumption is, you somewhat select that board and you, hey, this is the model we work under. We're all independently elected and we could have a council member in the future that says, I don't believe in any of that and I'm not gonna adhere to it, and we don't get to take their council seat away. Like, so I have that same, like, hey, I think we can build a framework. I think as long as there's some overlap of council, but it's gonna be upon us to build out and demonstrate the success of it. So that it's hard for someone in the future to tear down. And I think the first three years of that, it's gonna be the, the critically important aspect of drive success out of it, or it won't last.
And I, that's a concern, it always will be a concern, because elected official could just say, hey, you're to your point, no, no thank you, but I think again, I kind of, right, going in there was like, ooh, I don't know if I like that, um. Um, I think the other piece though, that's really important is, most of the prohibition pieces are really for staff, right, because the model, remember, is built off, we don't want to tell you everything to do, which we don't anyways, but we don't want to tell you everything to do, we just want to tell you what never to do, and this is where we want you to end, and that's what we want your plans based around. So my point is, is a lot of the prohibitions that exist within that plan are actually for staff, not for council. Council is more, um, the monitoring process and making sure that we're adhering, and then we just go through all of our prohibitions, um, often, and then the other linkage reports are really about relationships and how to interact, which I think those can be tweaked and looked at over time as well, but we review, we've only reviewed it, um, well, it'd be ten years, it'd be uh, our, our third time now reviewing it, so. And the first time was extensive, uh, right when I got there, and then the next two times were, kind of had a rhythm.
I tried to make an example tonight, using that methodology, which is council should be asked, should we do fifteenth to Roberts? Council should be asked, should we do, or we should give direction that we should have a, a path on both sides of Pineville. Right, and then am I on the right path, and then staff says, hey, we think we could do fifteenth to Roberts soon, we're gonna go do that, right? But we as council say, hey, we just want the whole thing done.
Figure it out.
Do it, do it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really the.
Is that, was that my first one?
That's pretty good, yeah.
I actually caught that, and I was like, he's, like, that's pretty good, like, it's really about the overarching plan, and then, I mean, she, she laid it out as a, a football field, she's like, look, you guys,
Yeah.
you guys lay out the football field, like, you lay out the plan with the inbounds and out-ofbounds, but then you let your, your players or your staff and they go do the playbook and run the plays and, as long as you tell them where the out-of-bounds and the goal lines are. And so it's.
He, I would give a different example, so let's use an example of using the trails and all those things, right, so that the trails and all those things would say, we want you to end here, um, by this date potentially, like, that's the ends that we want you to work towards of having this many trails or this much done, or implementing this plan that was done in two thousand seventeen by X date. Um, and then a prohibition for staff might be, thou shalt not ever budget within the next three-year unfunded commitments of X. Then when they're bringing back projects, they're saying, hey, we, we're, we're within the football field, and I'm not saying, would say exactly that, just giving an example of how it works of, we would just basically say, get us here, just don't ever come in here with five million dollars worth of things we don't know how to pay for in the next three years. As long as you don't do those things, and then you find a way to pay for them throughout the process with some agility, we're good, and then, then their plans are more, we're gonna, we're looking at this project, we're looking at this project, this is the direction that we're looking to go, uh, and we're staying under the cap, uh, and then the monitoring report would be them coming in, um, once a month, once a quarter, once a year, depending on it, where they would come in and say, um, see, we can prove to you that we're not budgeting more than X that you asked us not to, so it, it should give them more freedom of not having to ask us on every single one of these.
And spend two hours going through. Yeah, I, it's gonna be challenging, but I'm, I'm excited to, I think it's gonna be a paradigm shift that will be good for us, but I think e- I don't want to say easy to implement with council, but I think once we get a rhythm down, the, it'll help that orientation process with new council members and we can prove success and.
And uniquely, I think we're at a time where, you know, through election cycles, and I have no idea of anyone's plans, but we have three council members, we have a majority of council that will be here the next three years. And so we have a majority of council at minimum that can carry.
I'm still a maybe, by the way.
After tonight, I thought you were golden. Three, a, a, at least majority that for certain can carry this forward for the next three years, which I think are the critical years to demonstrate success out of it.
Yeah, and I, oddly enough, um, Joe Prom and, and Krista were here and we were talking about it just from the school perspective of like, hey, if this works really well for the city, like, I, I think it could be a tool that could be used with other local governments as well, so it's kind of cool that we might be paving that way and see how that goes, they'll have a new superintendent and, so, I think it'll be.
Hopeful.
Yeah. I think it'll be, uh, interesting for us to set that tone of how this works. Okay. I will send some dates out, I'll get some dates from Stacy and then send them out to you guys, and I'll get the right time zone on this next doodle poll.
Council roundtable, uh, Tim?
Start with me every time. Um, nothing tonight, thank you.
Jill?
Nothing tonight.
Alex? Jed, we just went too late, it's.
Yeah.
I know everyone had something, I'm confident, so, um, I have nothing. Real quick, I'll highlight the, um, Senate tour. So, uh, huge, you know, recognition, um, to staff on the prep work there. This was Sart- in my knowledge, is Sartell's first time being on the bus. And so, um, col- uh, staff had, had, uh, put out a plan of myself, um, Jody from Central Care and Metaya from GSDC. Wasn't certain of that plan, but, uh, it definitely proved to be. Wasn't certain of that plan, but, uh, it definitely proved to be beneficial to have those two partners on the bus. Centra Care's been through it many times. Actually had their own proposal in front of the Senate group earlier in the day. And then Natia from GSDC was spot on and being able to highlight the regional impact of what we're trying to do. So, briefly, bus shows up. We were expecting, earlier in the day, we were expecting there's probably gonna be twenty people on the bus. Senators, um, get a text from Senator Howe at noon. So, two hours before the bus showed up in Sartell and there's like, there's three senators and some staffers. Get on the bus, thought we'd have like a microphone to talk, do our pitch, they're like, grab a seat. So, yeah, we kind of got on the bus and the bus just started driving. And we, again, Nikki and Anna prepped us really well of things to talk about, things to hit on. It was halfway through the twenty-five minutes that we were allotted and we started twenty minutes late, that the whole regional impact and what we have going in Sartell really hit them. They saw every corner, we, every turn we took, they saw a different medical facility, building, whether it was a skin business, orthopedics, you name it, they're like, oh. And they started pointing out the window to all these different, and Senator Pappas, who was the chair of the board, like, I didn't realize, I thought we were gonna see a couple medical facilities here. You guys have them on every street corner. Yeah, we do, and they're scattered about, right? But in totality, is a great option, opportunity to kind of step back and like, wow, we do have something. I'd also call out, there was a lot of confusion, right? So, these three senators don't know anything about Sartell. They jump on a bus, they're running late. They had two full days of bus tours, back to back to back to back. And, um, we just get a twenty-five minute spotlight. And so, once they saw that connection to the Centra Care Plaza and the medical school, that's what hit for them is, wow, you guys are right across the street from all of this. And this is gonna be built in your backyard and any future development really has to come into this area, which is Sartell, but it's really regional. And so, it, it just all hit really, really well, um, of the regional efforts and Centra Care highlighting how they want to grow in this area. Yeah, feels great. Uh, obviously, they said, hey, you've got a big ask. We don't fund all of these things, so think about how you'd fund part of it if, if we're even able to do that. But the feedback we got from some of our partners who sat on others, and I know, Tim, you sat on, uh, different communities as well, the engagement they had from us was far different than others. So, St. Cloud had a hundred million dollar ask and that one got challenged significantly. We finished our tour. I think we went long and it started late. And yet, Pappas asked for us to get out and get a picture. And her staffer's like, we don't have time for this, and we all just got off the bus and got a picture. So, I think that was kind of that cherry on the top of like, wow, it did resonate for him. It sank in well. We'll see what happens in the, uh, down at St. Paul, but this job well done for everyone involved.
Great.
One of the highlights-
They couldn't see it. It's camouflaged.
We had Senator Howe join us on the bus and we told him that we would give him a ride back to his vehicle from Centra Care Plaza. And when we all got off the bus, got this picture and dispersed quickly, we forgot Senator Howe. And so, Senator, I'm getting a ride back, uh, with Officer Vandenberg in the Soldier Six camo vehicle. And Senator Howe calls me and he's like, you told me you'd give me a ride back. Oh, crap. So, we spun around, got back to the Plaza. The bus had actually got, like, kicked him off. And he's standing on the street corner. This was last week and it was cold. And then we made him sit in the backseat and so, it was, he took it in good hu, good humor. It was fun, but.
Yeah, we just accidentally left the senator.
Key part of our, uh, our ask is Senator Howe, so. All right, um, look for adjournment. It's her motion. Is there a second? All in favor? All right, we're adjourned.